Anything, Judy?
Yeah.
I can understand, even though, are we, is it, are we starting yet?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're ready to go.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. I am calling the meeting to order. I would like to request that everyone take a moment to mute your cell phone or BlackBerry. Thank you. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees Standing Committee, live on cable channel seventy-five. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu backslash livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers and mobile devices. The public session of this meeting will be available as a podcast, if in twenty-four hours can also be accessed via the CUNY website. Now to the business of the committee. Action items. Approval of the minutes of the committee on Facilities Planning, Construction and Management, meeting of September seventh, twenty sixteen. Are there any amendments? Okay. I'd like to call for a vote to approve items one A, please.
So moved.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fine. Policy calendar. I shall move the first resolution which you have at your places and received in advance of today's meeting entitled, One Bronx Community College: Execution of Lease Renewal for 1666 Bathgate Avenue, Bronx, New York. This will request the General Counsel to execute a lease renewal for three years, ten months, for the Bronx Educational Opportunity Center, Bronx EOC, a tenant of 1666 Bathgate Avenue since nineteen ninety-one. This lease renewal will begin on December first, twenty sixteen, and expire September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Base rent will be seven hundred and seven thousand for the first two years, and seven hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred for the balance of the term. The Bronx EOC will receive a six-month free rent period effective upon start of the term. The Port Authority will continue to be responsible for the exterior structural and roof repairs. The EOC will be responsible for interior maintenance, electric costs, and cleaning. All tenant costs under this lease renewal will be, continue to be funded by the State University of New York. Do I have a second? Second.
Second.
Judy, would you?
Sure. Just for some background, this is a program of the State University of New York. The program is totally paid for by the State University, and it's run by a CUNY campus. There are four of them. One is at the Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Queens. The one that we're talking about now is in the Bronx, and the program is run by Bronx Community College. The location is at Bathgate. The Port Authority has the lease, and this lease is going to run with the other lease. They're both going to expire at the same time. So that's kind of the, the general. And one of the, one of the trustees basically called and asked me about whether we had looked in the area and whether we had comps for the area. This is the cheapest. You can't find any cheaper than this, and one of the reasons we know there was a, a problem with one of the pipes, and we were thinking that we'd have to find, we'd have to find another location, so we went out and looked. But, but the DEP took care of it, so we're using this location. So as far as your question, this is the cheapest you're going to get.
Okay.
Are you satisfied?
Yes, I am.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any questions or comments first?
Aye.
No, no questions.
No comments. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Ananamous. I now move the second resolution entitled Two City University of New York: Five-Year Capital Budget Request, Fiscal Year 2017 through eighteen through Fiscal Year 2021 through twenty-two. Every year, the university is required to submit a five-year capital plan to the State Division of Budget and the City Office of Management and Budget. As in previous plans, the Fiscal Year 2017 eighteen through Fiscal Year 2021 twenty-two request focuses on completion of existing projects and critical health, safety, code compliance, and rehabilitation projects, while recognizing the need for expansion and modernization of the facilities called for in this master plans. Do I have a second?
Second.
Let me once again call on Vice Angela Berdron to give a presentation regarding this resolution, and then we will open it for discussion.
Maybe I'll do it in two parts, so that I can basically deal with your issue of having to go to another meeting. What's posted online are three pages and then an eight-page document. The resolution is posted online, and it basically says it's a request for $6.8 billion, broken up for community colleges and for senior colleges. There is attached to that a list of what the priorities are, which I'll go through in my presentation. And then attached to that is a grid. And the grid is, this is last year's book, basically lists every single project for every single campus in priority order for the request for five years. So that's basically, you're voting on the five-year request, you're voting on the request for every project that, that is in here. And I think most of the people across the table took a look at this. We had discussions. People asked questions. So I can give a presentation after you move the, move the item if you want, because I think everyone has received information. Or do you want me to do the presentation first?
Are there any questions or comments? No? Okay. So let's bring this to a vote. I need a motion to adopt these resolutions.
So moved.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, good. Okay.
So now, now I'm going to go through the specifics. And basically, okay, basically what I'm going to do is, the eight-page grid has hundreds and hundreds of projects. I'm going to give you a flavor of basically what we've, the projects that we've completed, the projects that we are looking for going forward, and the new buildings that we are asking for funding for. So that's kind of the three pieces. There was quite a few pages, but I will go very quickly. And I'm basically, this is about the capital budget, the five-year request. I did this last time. This is like the end of the last one, the last presentation, okay? As I think everyone knows, the majority of the funding is from New York State. Senior colleges, a hundred percent funded by the state. Community colleges are fifty-fifty. City funds are fifty percent funding for community colleges. And then you get the Merrill and the elected officials. This is what we have now. We have over $3 billion in reappropriations. We have many funds to, to progress many current projects. But without additional funds, no new buildings can begin construction. And the issue for the state is the bonding issue, and I think everybody realizes that, because if you watch, if you read the newspaper, the governor is building a new airport. He's basically building a new bridge. So the ability to issue bonds is getting tighter and tighter. This chart, I think, if I was going to say, what's the most important document? I think this is really critical. This shows you how much money we've gotten in critical maintenance from eleven-twelve to now. And you can see that the, the, most we've gotten is about 284 million. And in the last year, we got 143 million. Now, this book is for $6.9 billion. So you can see that our need is much greater than the funds that we've, that we've gotten. The other funding is for strategic initiatives, and strategic initiatives are the new buildings. Capital program administration, that basically remains the same. CUNY twenty-twenty. So this kind of gives you a picture of what we're, what we've gotten for critical maintenance and what we've gotten for new buildings in the last five years. Now, the other side of the coin here is, what have we completed? We have gotten billions of dollars from the state to basically take care of the issues at, at CUNY. And you could basically look at, just look at this. If you look, we got the Silverman School of Social Work. We've got the John Jay Expansion. Brooklyn, we've got the New Graduate School of Cinema. And I want to show you this, because I, you have to be able to balance that we have a great need, but we have gotten quite a bit of, of, of funding. Okay, this is the community college. LaGuardia, because President Mello is sitting here, new, new admission to the Bursar facility. And if you look at the, the number, the cost, remember, half of that comes from the state and half of that comes from the city. So it's quite a bit of funding. Okay, now I'm going to get to the need. I think I've talked about this. I may have talked about this more than I have to. The age of CUNY's facilities. I went over this at the last meeting. This was the introduction. And history of deferred maintenance. This basically kind of shows you that we have aging facilities. The next slide talks about critical maintenance. We did a study in two thousand and seven. Actually, we did it with SUNY. We basically went hand-in-hand to the state legislature, and that's when the, the funding for critical maintenance started. In two thousand and twelve, we did an update, and in another year and a half, we're going to go back and do it again with SUNY. But it, go back. You could look at the bottom. We still have a backlog of 2.5 billion in critical maintenance. So we've got a lot of need out there. I think I, I think I went through this the last time. This is how we get what our need is. Is it, is there somebody that wants me to go through this? Have I explained this enough, how, what our process is to develop this book? Or should I?
I think I just keep.
You, I just keep, keep going. Okay. Let's, okay. This is probably the number two slide. That's the most important. Okay, this is what you voted on. This is a $6.8 billion need. You can see the seniors is 5.1. The community colleges, 1.7. Our first-year priorities are 1.2. Now, when you look at the resolution that you just voted on, page, the third page, gives you what our priorities are. And this is probably, I'd just like to take out two seconds to basically explain this, if you want to look at it. This is, and for the board members and for the other, other people that have been here at CUNY, we have not done this before. We, so we are asking for $600 million in critical maintenance. And where do we basically get that number, number from? That number comes from our critical maintenance study. And if you recall, the last slide that I showed you that was critical, we've not, we have to get funded approximately $450 million a year to keep up. So the reason why we're asking for 600 is because you could see in the prior years, we didn't basically get enough to keep up. But this is much lower than basically what we've asked for before. Senior college strategic initiatives, I'm going to get to that. I'm going to show you what, what schools are asking for new buildings. The community college critical maintenance is $80 million. That's a match. We already got that from the city. And the community college strategic initiatives are for new buildings. So that is basically what's attached to the resolution. Okay, this is just another summary page. This describes the priorities voted on by the trustees. I'm not going to go through each specific one, because I think this was included in the last presentation. Okay, so now this gives you, now I'm going to show you examples of basically what's in the grid that we distributed. Actually, Trustee Vasquez asked me last week, we ended, I don't know if you remember. She asked me what these things were. So the first one on the left is Kingsborough. The one in the middle is the Voorhees Building for New York City Tech. The one on the right is the Queens Gym. The escalator is BMCC, but to be honest, it could be any school. And you probably wouldn't know which if I told you the wrong one. This is Medgar Ever's new library. That's what's on this book. And CSI. And you know, I almost brought the last eight years of books, because every cover usually has a building that we haven't built yet. This is the only one. And the last eight years, guess what? All those buildings have been built. So it takes time to accumulate money, but we basically do get there. Okay, the critical maintenance needs are now divided into two categories, which is basically infrastructure, and it's, the, the second type is upgrade of different program space for classrooms and libraries and all kinds of student space. So here's a highlight of, here's a highlight of what our need is. Now, what we did was, we tried to take something from every school. If you look in the grid that, that is posted online, and I think you have it, there's a lot more than one per school. But we, I wanted you to get a flavor of what we're talking about. Now, Baruch Seventeen Lex, I think I talked about this last time. That's a building that nobody's touched since 1920. We've got 75 million. We need 250 million. So this is going to go on for probably the next ten years. Ingersoll Hall Upgrade, we're doing labs. City College, the Marshack Building. The Marshack Building's interesting, because we basically did the facade, and now we're renovating inside the building. And I don't think I'll go through all of these, because if I go through all of these, you'll be here quite a while. But I could talk about all of them. Oh, you skipped.
Oh, you went.
No, no, leave, go, go to John Jay. It's okay. So John Jay is the library upgrade. Lehman is the theater ADA. And that, by the way, that theater is used by the community a tremendous amount. McCauley Honors is a fire alarm. So you can see from the page before, it goes from 100 million to 2.4 million. But the 2.4 million is pretty important. The Medgar Ever's Carroll Street Building, that building is in really horrible shape. The, it's 39 million. But Bob, how much do you think you need to do all of Carroll Street?
How many years or how many?
How much money?
All of Carroll Street?
Yeah.
Probably about 30 million, 35 million.
Thirty more, okay. New York City Tech. New York City Tech, okay. That's the elevator replacements in one building, and New York City Tech is getting a new building. But we still have to take care of the elevators in the other buildings. The Staten Island's interesting. Access and circulation upgrade. If you try and, if you go to CSI and you take your car, from one who worked in, at DOT, filling lots of potholes, I would basically recommend that you go no more than five miles per hour. So this for CSI, and look at how, how much it's going to cost, is pretty significant. And the York de-watering, that is pretty significant, too. So I think, that's the last one, right? Oh, a community college is, sorry, President Mello. The Bronx Community Campus Upgrade, that has been going on for the last seven years, and we spent, we have spent $100 million there already, and we're asking for 36 more. Hostos has HVAC upgrade. So you can see the difference in the cost, but each one is pretty significant for the campus. Community College, I think I talked about LaGuardia. LaGuardia has a building that's as big as Macy's and probably could fit a whole campus in that building. But we don't have enough funds to basically renovate each floor, so we're doing one floor at a time. And we're getting there, right?
We're getting there.
And roof replacements. You know, we put this up for Queensborough, but we're doing roof replacements in, across CUNY campuses. Okay, now, this is strategic initiatives, and this is, this is actually the requests for new buildings. One of the things I wanted to point out was, you know, when you look at our request, you can see request one year for 50 million for a building, 60 million the next building, next year, 80 million. It takes a really long time to accumulate enough, enough money. And there are all kinds of legal issues involved, because this was, this building was taken by eminent, this land was taken by eminent domain. So you can see, it started in 1993 and it opened in 2011. So you kind of have to get the feel for this. And this is the Bronx Community College North Hall. And I told you this last time, this is one of my favorite buildings. You can see that it started in 1999, and we opened it in September of 2012. So this, this takes a long time. But the proof that you eventually get enough, enough funding is the fact that we've gotten eight new buildings at CUNY in the last, let's say, eight or nine years. But I wanted the new trustees to basically get a feel for this. Okay, so here are the buildings that we're requesting. We're requesting 50 million for Brooklyn College. This is their, this is their science complex. Anyone have a question? This is the College of Staten Island. This will be a 175,000 square foot facility to house a high-performance computer. That's going to serve the entire university. So we're requesting 50 million, and we need 274.
For, for any of these, how much are there? Is there already some money allocated, some of these, what these are due?
No. This, this one, I, we have 39 million already. What's the one, the one before? Hundred and fifteen for this. So some of the.
So you are accumulating money for some of these, and here are additional requests.
Well, if you, okay, because I, the, one of the slides that I showed you that basically showed how much money we received, in 1415, we received about 194 million for, for new buildings. And that's where all of these small amounts came from, that year. And then if you go back, and if you go back even further, you look at 2008, and we got 1.6 billion dollars. So those are the two in the last 15 years. That's basically where we got the, where we got the funding. But most of this comes from 14 and 15. It's, it's, I guess it's a cycle. And we're not, you know, after nine buildings, we're not in the cycle. So this is the College of Staten Island. This is the Hunter Science Building. We're requesting 200. This is for Phase One. We have 100 million. Okay, this is, this is, this is an interesting one. This is for Medgar Ever's. Medgar Ever's got a new building, a new science building, about three or four years ago. And right next to that science building, there is a, a plot of land. And that plot of land is for the second building for Medgar's, which will probably happen in 15 years. So we basically propose that they get a smaller building for about 30 million dollars. We do not have any funding for this. This is York College, their academic conference center. We have 41 million for this. This is pretty significant for the community, because if you look at Jamaica, and this would be iconic. You would be riding on the railroad. You would be able to see it. This would really change the campus. And Jamaica's really changing. The city, the state, the borough president is investing quite a bit of money in, in Jamaica. Okay, now, Gutman Community College, which was ranked, I think, the number one community college in the state, is basically occupying a lease space on 41st Street. It has outgrown the lease space. So we were asking for, North Hall is, used to be part of John Jay, and we were requesting money to basically renovate North Hall. This is a 280,000 square feet building. This building, the Hostos Building, we're in the process of designing this. The request is 100 million, and the reason why it's 100 million, because most of the others were smaller, is because this is 50 from the city, and this is 50 from the state. Okay, so I kind of gave, gave you a view of the new buildings we're asking for, our critical maintenance needs, and basically what we've done with the critical maintenance money that we've basically gotten over the last 10 years. So I wanted to give you a picture of, I guess, bring to life the numbers that are on the piece of paper. Any questions?
Yeah, what's the process then? Given that you've gotten about 124 million or thereabouts in actual funding from the state, so then, and given these need per year over the last few years, so then what's your process, given these very large needs, determining what goes to, to which building, given that your funding is far less than your 1.2 billion dollar request?
So for the new buildings?
For the critical maintenance, too. I insert since I'm more concerned with critical maintenance than with, with new buildings, but also for buildings under.
Well, the critical maintenance, the way we give out critical maintenance is, this is kind of, you know, the Bible. This is basically created with the schools. The president signed off on this. Everything in here, this is all in priority order. So depending upon how much money we get, we have a formula to basically allocate the money to the schools, and the formula is based on the critical maintenance needs. So we basically sit down with the campuses when we get the money. Now, one year, for instance, let's just pick John Jay. John Jay could get, could be allocated 6 million, or John Jay could be allocated 15 million, depending upon what the total is. And depending upon what the total is, is how we determine that. So if you would like, if you would like to ask me that question, once we get the amount of money and how we're going to determine who gets what.
I'm more concerned with hearing how, what your process is for, for determining it. For example, as you know, LaGuardia, that facade is, is a danger, and obviously you are working very hard to remedy. We also know that the elevators at Seventeen Lex at Baruch are a disaster. We also know that the facades at, at New York City Tech need a lot of work, so, and without going through all the needs. So then the question is, with limited money, what's your process for deciding what you're going to do this, you know, in a given year?
Well, in a given year, the, the number one is safety, and, you know, when you bring up the facade, the facade is the number one, basically the number one need. But it's all based upon, the number one need is always safety and health. But it's all based on basically what we have in here, because this is all based on the critical maintenance study. But I know where you're going, but I think the best time to discuss that is, because if you get, if you get 20 million dollars a school, it's a lot, it's a much different story than if you get 3 million dollars a school.
And how much of the allocation then from the state is typically being directed to a given school, as opposed to leaving it, leaving a pool for CUNY, and then for you to allocate it to where the need is greatest?
Probably, probably about 50% goes to the school.
How much of our, our capital requests are tied to strategic initiatives on the other side, our operating budget? When we think about upscaling programs like ASAP, being that we're not getting a lot of funding, and we're thinking about space?
Well, it's interesting you bring up ASAP. The city has been unbelievably generous. We went to the city with a proposal based upon the needs of every community college. And it's not totally funded, but I have to tell you that they gave us operating funds and they gave us capital funds. So we'll probably, we're going to go with another request, but they gave us quite a bit of money to take care of what our issues are. Now, for ASAP, there are two schools that need additional space. Hostos and, and BMCC. So we need operating money for, for that, and they've given us operating money, and we are looking for space. So as far as a program like that, Matt and I worked together to make sure that we get both pieces. Because you bring up a great question. Just having the capital, building a space out and not being able to maintain it is a real problem. So we can, we work hand-in-hand to make. So we work hand-in-hand to make sure that we don't have that problem.
Any other questions? Okay. If there's no more business before the committee, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
So moved.